Good evening, Rona Park. It's five o'clock. Time to start our city council meeting. Would you please stand so we can do the land acknowledgement and then the salute to the flag? The City of Rona Park acknowledges Indigenous peoples as the traditional stewards of the land. Let it be acknowledged that the City of Rona Park is located within the traditional homelands of the Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria comprised of Coast Mewok and Southern Pomo peoples. David Armstrong, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I collect the allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak on item two, please.
Please go ahead and take your seats. And we'll have... What's that?
Item two.
If you'd like to fill out a speaker card, you're more than welcome to do so. They're over there.
We're not required by the law to sell anything.
Then I will not recognize you.
If no requirement to sell anything, you should know your business.
Okay, we're going to start off with presentations. We're going to welcome Supervisor Linda Hopkins.
You're violating the government code.
Please have a seat.
Government Code 54954.3 says every agenda for regular meetings must be followed.
Come to order. You're not recognized.
To address a legislative...
You're not recognized.
On any item of interest to...
If you don't sit down, I will have the police chief remove you from the room.
Mr. Mayor, let's just let him speak.
Yeah?
Let him speak, yes.
As the government code is clear, we might increase this with your client?
Would you like to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Please go to the podium.
Was I not clear, ma'am?
Please go to the podium.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, City Attorney. It's nice to see that we have a City Attorney who understands the law. Okay, thank you. For the benefit of the city council and the audience here, my name is George Berich. I'm a former city council member in the Communist Republic of Khatati. And we've been over this issue with speaker cards many times. Some supervisors' council has not followed the law on this. And also the fact that every, each and every agenda item, according to the Brown Act, must be opened up for public comment. Okay? So I know there's no school on this, being on the city council, but a little bit of homework is good. Regarding the land acknowledgement, as we have expressed to this Khatati City Council several times now, this is ridiculous and it's silly. However, in respect for the Rona Park City Council, it's much better than the silly land acknowledgement over in Khatati. It's a mess. Okay? But the fact is, this is a statement of paying respect to the land. And let me remind you, the land is an inanimate object. It cannot hear you. It has no conscience. It has no feelings. It has no values. And this is all virtue signaling. It's all part of some white guilt or something that you guys have come up with, that you need to do this in order to make us all feel good. And let me tell you something about the Indigenous people who were here. We don't know if they were the first American human species to be on this land over the last thousands of years. The recorded history does not go back that far, and it's ridiculous to say that they were stewards of the land. When they foiled the land, they used the air, they fouled the water, they hunted game, and so forth. And if they had the technology that we do today, they would have exploited the land like the rest of us. So this is all a bunch of poppycock circumstance to make you guys feel good, and it really, really should stop. You guys are better than this. We've brought these arguments to the Khatati City Council. They're listening. They're changing it. I think you should too, because I think it's an insult to our intelligence that you would go down this road with a land acknowledgement. Silly. Thank you. Thank you, City Attorney.
Okay, let's get back to our regular agenda, and we'd like to welcome Board Chair Supervisor Linda Hopkins to come give us an update from the county. Welcome, Linda, and thank you for joining us.
Sit down. Okay, there you go. Thank you so much for the invitation. And I actually want to start off by saying that I think after eight years in government, I basically have a master's degree in poppycock. And I actually want to commend you for your leadership in actually starting with a land acknowledgement, and something that we have not yet really gone through the process to actually do with the county. And I think it's really beautiful that you started the meeting that way. So I wanted to start off by saying thank you. I also want to commend you on your leadership. I have a little bit of jealousy of Rona Park coming from county government. I feel that you have been extremely nimble in addressing a lot of the most critical challenges that are facing your constituents. Specifically want to commend you for your work on homelessness and mental health, on infrastructure and on environmental issues. So on that note, I'm going to give a very brief overview of what we are going through as we go into the county's budget for this year. Budget hearings take place the second week of June, so it is right around the corner. I do hope that you have all received the news from the Department of Health Services that the county does intend to fully fund your mobile support program, which is excellent that you have here in Rona Park. So that is hopefully something that you do not need to worry about as you approach your budget hearings. It will not be formally ratified by the Board of Supervisors until the budget hearings take place, but it's coming in as a recommendation from the Department of Health Services with the CEO. And I can't speak for all of my colleagues, but I can say that I support it wholeheartedly, and I'm really grateful for your leadership on that work. However, I also want to acknowledge that we are experiencing potentially severe budget shortfalls as a result of both state and federal action. The county receives more than $300 million a year of ongoing federal funding, much of which at this point is at risk. And that is all going to our Health and Human Services programs, which are programs that we provide countywide, right? That's not just for unincorporated areas. That's for all of the cities as well. And so we are very concerned with the passage of the big, beautiful bill out of the House and headed over to the Senate, that we are moving towards a scenario in which we have much less money for eligibility work and for social services. At the same time, unfortunately, we are facing a $12 billion shortfall over at the State of California's budget. And so more than 40% of the county's budget comes from either the state or federal sources, which means that we are really going into budget hearings with a tremendous amount of uncertainty. We are trying, going to try to mitigate that uncertainty by being as restrained as we possibly can during the upcoming budget hearings. And we will likely actually have to have, for the first time in quite some time, I think since the Great Recession, a second round of budget hearings that would happen in fall after the feds kind of make their decisions and potentially adopt a budget that could lead us to unfortunately have to cut services. So that is kind of what we're looking at from the county's perspective. I just wanted to provide a preview of that. I also want to acknowledge that there has been conversations at all of the city councils and also through the mayors and council members, which I believe Mayor Judache is currently chair of, about bringing forward priorities to work on with the county. And so would love to answer any questions that you might have or accept any feedback that I can take as we enter into our budget conversation coming up in the next couple of weeks. I also wanted to provide a little bit of an update, because I know Measure O funding has been of tremendous interest to our city partners. And I think that there's sometimes this tension between like, you know, unincorporated communities and city communities, and like, everyone thinks that someone else is getting more. And the reality is, is that there are not enough dollars to go around, and yet we actually still have money. And so we are moving forward with a second NOFA. In response to some of the concerns that we've heard from the cities, I actually formed a Measure O ad hoc of Supervisors Gore and Corsi, and kind of gave them the blessing to, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, go out and hopefully work very closely with our city partners and with our NGO partners to see what we can pick up. Because we know that there's a substantial cut to the state funding that is leading everyone to sort of take a haircut. I know actually one of the service providers out in my neck of the woods in Gurnville was looking at giving notices to folks who were in the shelter, because now we only have funding for, I think, 28 people, whereas previously it was for 35. So it's not, not good times right now, but I think the best way to get through them is to actually talk to each other and collaborate and try to make sure that we're all rowing in the same direction. So I really, really appreciate the invitation from the mayor to come and provide a little bit of insight into our budget process. And then I'm really here just to honestly take orders, homework, and, and answer any questions that the council may have. So thank you so much for the invitation, and take it through the mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'll turn to my colleagues, council member.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Hopkins, for coming today. I realize you're very busy and popping around to all the city councils, and especially to give them the bad news that money's tight everywhere, which we've all learned through our budget process. I'm especially appreciative of you letting us know now that our safety team is, is safe in Rona Park. That's so important to us. Whenever we get our report, it's just so fantastic to see the outreach they're doing. The other thing I'm sure you're aware of that we're terribly concerned about here is the, the funding for Le Bath Landing. And I don't know if that's, where is that on your process? If you could just speak to that for a moment, that would be very nice. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so can, can I get a little bit more information about where the previous funding source for that was?
The previous funding source is from the county.
From the county. Through the, like, through which funding source do you know? Is it through Measure O, or was it through, like, CBDG, or, okay. So Measure O is going out for a second NOFA, and I believe that that is actually either out or out within the next couple of weeks. Because we recognize that we had a very, very long list, and we, we only had about 10% of the funding to, you know, cover the amount of requests that we received during the last NOFA. But that should be, and I can definitely check in with our Department of Health Services to find out if it's already on the street or if it's not, and then make sure that your city manager has that information so that you all can resubmit that.
Thank you very much. And I know, I'm sure you've heard this from other councils. One of the things that we talk about is return to source. How much money, how much tax dollars being taken out of Rona Park? It, it kind of goes through its services, but what percentage is coming back? So if you could just kind of watch that on behalf of the cities, I think that'd be wonderful. And I would agree that you probably do have a doctorate in poppycock. And maybe you want to put that on your business card, and thank you for acknowledging that.
I sent a new, yeah, business card for, for me right there. That was, I appreciate that. Yes. No, I will definitely track that. And I will say that, you know, return to source is a conversation that we have a lot with respective transient occupancy tax in unincorporated areas. So I totally understand, from that perspective, the sensitivity of, hey, this is revenue being generated in our community. How do we make sure that I can go, you know, and defend to my constituents, which, you know, your constituents, that they're actually kind of getting their, their bang for their buck, right, of what they're spending?
Please, council member.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Supervisor, for coming tonight. I know that some news, you wish it would have been different, but with the reality of what we are going through, basically, cities are, we have to deal with our own budget alone, and pretty much not expecting much, especially from the feds or the county. I'm just pained to hear that we will, once again, will be facing difficulty, but knowing that, coming from you and having our constituent inside here, listening to what you have to say, I'm hoping that gives them a little bit of insight of what we've been trying to say, and that we've been trying really hard, and that including the county is in the same boat as everybody. And thank you for letting us know that you guys are trying, so that we will continue to try our best to help our constituent the way we know best. So I just wanted to say thank you.
You're very welcome. And thank you for your work.
Please.
What resources do the public have, as most people in our county are at work during the times of budget hearings, right? We deal with that here as well, or they're rushing from work and childcare and whatnot. Where can they find more resources if they want to make public comment that they're not available for, or if they want to just learn more about what is at potential cut, especially with 40% of the budget from state and the states being affected because of federal decisions, which now affect everyone in the audience? Where, where can they go, especially with, we know government websites tend to be pretty clunky, kind of what's the easiest route for, for folks?
That is a great question, and I agree. It's, I've always been a big fan of participatory budgeting processes, and it's impossible for folks to show up, right, on a Tuesday morning and stay for potentially three days of budget hearings. So we do have, it's a government website, but it's actually better than most of our county websites, because it's specifically a budget landing page. And you can actually click on different departments and kind of go, you know, do you want to learn more about the sheriff's budget? Do you want to learn more about the public defender or Health and Human Services? And so I would say that that is the best place to start. Folks are also welcome to email me directly, and I can be reached at District Five, that's the number five not spelled out, at sonoma-county.org. And so all of the supervisors, you know, have email addresses, and I really try to read all of that feedback, you know, beforehand. And the other thing that I would encourage folks to do is that a lot of times, some of our NGO partners will gather to try to make comment during public comment on behalf of some community. So if there's someone who can't make it there, if they say are really interested in legal aid and providing additional, you know, resources for tenant protections, or if they're, you know, interested in deportation defense initiatives, like, there might be a nonprofit who's planning to speak there. And sometimes those nonprofits are actually willing to read folks' testimony into the record, you know, at the microphone. So sometimes people will just kind of stack it and then read, read on behalf of other folks who can't be there. So that's another way of advocating. I also forgot to mention one small bright spot, I believe, and kind of knock on wood, that we will be trying to set aside at least a half a million dollars during budget hearings to do kind of a NOFA, Notice of Funds Available, for our NGOs to respond to some of kind of the most imminent concerning actions from the federal administration. So we've heard loud and clear from some members of our LGBTQI community who are being targeted, you know, in terms of maybe potential mental health support. We've also heard from our undocumented community that additional legal resources may be needed. So I think we're going to try to prioritize some of those needs with that Notice of Funding Available. So if that passes, knock on wood, I think it's coming forward as a recommendation from the CEO, and I worked with her on that, that would be opportunities for your local nonprofits to go out there and try to bring some of that, those resources to Rona Park.
Okay. And then just for, for folks, NGO, you're meaning non-governmental organizations. It's okay.
Part of the poppycock PhD, start speaking in your acronyms.
You do. And then for, for those of us that live here in Rona Park, we're actually split. So our direct supervisors are Supervisor Corsi and Supervisor Rabbit. And if you're not sure, email, email both. But that, I think that was all I had. So thank you so much.
Yeah. And I would say email both and all, because we all, you know, these decisions are countywide decisions, and I love hearing from the folks of Rona Park, even though you don't get to, you know, vote for me or not vote for me.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Supervisor, I just really appreciate you being here. I learn something every time we talk, and I really appreciate you keeping us in mind when it comes to Le Bath Landing. I know that that is something that is always on our minds. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yes. And thanks for coming tonight. And I think Susan, you know, made all the major bullet points that I was going to make. But, you know, we just really appreciate the cooperative spirit when all of the cities came together in January and decided, you know, why don't we work together and list our three top priorities? And then, of course, last Thursday, we did in fact do that. And it's being very well received. And of course, you know, the county administrator was there witnessing this whole thing. And it was just a great opportunity, I think, you know, for us to look around the room and say, yeah, this is what we got. You know, this is the team, right? You know, Jackie hit on it, you know, very correctly. So we're going to stick together, and we're going to work cooperatively with the county, and we're going to do that to the benefit of all of our residents. And I thank you for coming here tonight, and you have a pleasant evening.
Thank you very much. So the last thing I just want to say is, and this is really important, I think, for the audience too, is like, I'm very lucky in that I'm paid to do this. This is my job. I just want to acknowledge that all of you are volunteers who spend probably as much time as I do responding to issues that are just as difficult as what the County Board of Supervisors does. And so thank you very much for stepping forward, and your leadership in Rona Park is really appreciated. And you're setting the standard in a lot of different initiatives that I feel like we're struggling to keep up with at the county. So thank you for your work and for your service.
Thank you, Supervisor. Okay, next, we're going to do a mayor's proclamation, proclaiming May 2025 as Affordable Housing Month in the City of Rona Park. Okay. Whereas affordable housing is one of the cornerstones of democracy, whereas our communities thrive when all families have a place to call home, whereas each year there are Rona Park families that struggle to find affordable housing, affordable home, excuse me, in one of the most expensive housing markets in the nation, whereas affordable housing is an essential element of our equitable fire recovery process, whereas the City of Rona Park is committed to safe, stable, and affordable housing for all its residents, whereas the strength of Rona Park community and economy depends on providing access to housing options that, that allow current and future residents of all income levels and ethnicities to live where they work, whereas affordable housing near employment centers and transit reduces traffic congestion, air pollution, and emissions, and lowers housing and transportation costs for local workers, whereas organizations throughout Rona Park are dedicated to provide safe, stable, permanent, and affordable housing for all the members of the community and are collaboratively working to bring the need for affordable housing to the forefront of discussion in Rona Park. Whereas these organizations are encouraged to partner with local agencies and community members to recognize Affordable Housing Week, which supports the sharing of best practices, opportunities, and solutions to provide affordable housing that is the right of all individuals. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I Gerard Judache is mayor, and on behalf of this city council, do proclaim May 2025 as Affordable Housing Month in the City of Rona Park, and encourage all residents to embrace the spirit of equal housing opportunity and adhere to the letter and character of fair housing. Thank you. And we've got two folks who are going to come and accept this. One is Sonia Bike Berich from Generation Housing, and the other one is Rick Wallach from Burbank Housing. If you could please both come to the front podium and say a few words, and then we'll... (laughter) In no particular order. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Judache, council members, and city staff. On behalf of Generation Housing, thank you for recognizing May as Affordable Housing Month and for your continued leadership in addressing our housing, our region's housing challenges. Rona Park has shown a deep understanding that affordable housing isn't just about buildings, it's about people. You recognize, as your proclamation states, that safe, stable, and affordable homes are the foundation of a healthy, equitable, and resilient community. They are essential to ensuring our economy, environment, and families can thrive. Access to affordable homes impacts everything: our economy, our climate, education, health, and whether working families can continue to live and grow here. It ensures current and future residents of all income levels and backgrounds can live where they work and call this community home. At Generation Housing, we're proud to be your partner, working alongside the city to advance bold, lasting housing solutions. Affordable Housing Month is a great reminder that local leadership matters. It's an opportunity to reimagine outdated policies, champion community-driven projects, and build partnerships that make it possible for more working families to call Rona Park home. Thank you again for your leadership and for recognizing that housing is not just a need, but a shared responsibility, one that defines the strength and the future of Rona Park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff, and ladies and gentlemen. I don't have anything prepared, so I'm just going to say I really appreciate the collaboration that the city has provided for Burbank Housing, and we'd love to continue to work with you, both in the past, present, and future.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments from my council before we go take a picture? Okay. Well, why don't you come on up front? We're going to take a picture.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. So the, the announcement I have is, you may recall that back in April, thank you, there was a request by Councilmember Rodriguez and a second by Councilmember Elward to consider conducting a third budget workshop after discussing the matter with the, the two council members that provided that direction. At this time, there is no need to hold a third budget workshop, so I just wanted to come back and report this out to the council, that at this time, we are not considering a third budget workshop, but we are planning to bring you a budget for, for recommendation of adoption at the June 10 council meeting. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Mayor, really quickly, just want to comment to that since I made the motion. Part of it, as City Manager said, is a lot of the questions that I had were answered. I had multiple. That doesn't mean that I can't have more questions, or that the public can't also make public comment. So I just want to make that clear to folks, that you can, if you still have questions or anything regarding the budget, you can contact us or come to make public comment.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that. Next up, summer community program update by, she was there, Cindy Back, there she is. I'm like, she was right there. Welcome, Cindy.
All right, we are in the height and heart of special event season. For those of you who are able to attend, our first of our summer events was yesterday, our Memorial Day Ceremony. Thank you for participating in that. And up next Friday, if you can believe it, next Friday is June, we will have the opening of our Party in the Plazin Farmers Market. To the right, you can see our lineup, and I do have to take accountability that we have a misspelling of one of our bands, a very important band. It's already been caught, and we have corrected it.
Okay. Next.
Not yet, but you can say it.
I believe next we have an update from the city manager.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members. So the, the announcement I have is, you may recall that back in April, thank you, there was a request by Councilmember Rodriguez and a second by Councilmember Elward to consider conducting a third budget workshop. After discussing the matter with the, the two council members that provided that direction, at this time, there's no need to hold a third budget workshop. So I just wanted to come back and report this out to the council that at this time we are not considering a third budget workshop, but we are planning to bring you a budget for recommendation of adoption at the June 10th council meeting. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Mayor, really quickly, just want to comment to that since I made the motion. Part of it, as city manager said, is a lot of the questions that I had were answered. I had multiple. That doesn't mean that I can't have more questions or that the public can't also make public comment. So I just want to make that clear to folks that you can, if you still have questions or anything regarding the budget, you can contact us or come to make public comment.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that. Next up, summer community program update by, she was there, Cindy Back, there she is. I'm like, she was right there. Welcome Cindy.
All right. We are in the height and heart of special event season. For those of you who are able to attend, our first of our summer events was yesterday, our Memorial Day Ceremony. Thank you for participating in that. And up next Friday, if you can believe it, next Friday is June, we will have the opening of our Party on the Plaza and Farmer's Market. To the right, you can see our lineup and I do have to take accountability that we have a misspelling of one of our bands, a very important band. It's already been caught and we've corrected it everywhere except on this slide. So I apologize to the members of the band that has the misspelled band name. Yes, happens to be The Rotten Tomatoes should be spelled R-O-T-T-E-N, not O-N.
Either way, we're rotten, so it doesn't matter.
There you go. Like I said, that has already been caught and it's been changed on, we've ordered new posters, we changed it on everything except this slide.
It's okay.
So my apologies. As we did last summer, we have two specialty evenings. We have our Pride Night on June 13th with Cotati Roanoke Park Celebrate Love nonprofit. And then we have on August 8th, our Latino Heritage Celebration in partnership with the Latino Alliance. This year, the 4th of July does fall on a Friday, so there will be no party on the plaza on 4th of July. We invite the community to come and celebrate the RP Jubilee with us. Next up, we have our Juneteenth Celebration in partnership with Sonoma State. The planning is well underway. We're very excited about this. We opened up registration for tickets, which are no charge last week and we only have, I think, less than 40 spots left. We, this is one of our few events that we don't market very early because we know that as soon as we open it up, it will fill. So it is that and we have set aside seats already for Sonoma State and City of Roanoke Park dignitaries. So if you haven't registered, don't worry, we have your seat saved already. We are providing childcare once again. So if people would like to have their children participate in the event, they'll be able to enjoy the same lunch as their parents, but they'll also be able to enjoy some Juneteenth craft activities and be with our community services leader during the course of the day. I'd like to update the council and the community that we did do something a little different this year as it related to our awardees. We opened up the nomination process to the entire community, both Sonoma State staff and students, as well as the City of Roanoke Park residents. We received seven nominations. We created a nomination rating committee, including two previous awardees and a staff member from Roanoke Park and a staff member from Sonoma State, did a complete blind review so removed all the names from the ratings prior to the evaluation process. So we're pretty proud of creating a very equitable way to determine who our awardees are going to be. I'm not going to announce them to you today because we just tabulated the scores this afternoon, but that will come out very soon. Then we have the RP Jubilee on July 4th from noon to four. You will see many of the same things you've seen in the past with Fun Jump Zones, the Foam Pit. We will be having a band called The Cheese Balls this year. We're very excited about them. Don't let the name fool you, they're very great. We had a lot of opportunities to look at various bands this year and we chose The Cheese Balls. So please come out and enjoy this event. We will be partnering again with the Education Foundation for our libation sales. So please come out and support us on July 1st, or July 4th. It's going to be great. And the next day is a Saturday, nobody, well, not everybody has to work the next day. It's going to be a great day. We wanted to make sure to point out that all of our community events are funded by Measure M, Parks for All, which is a sales tax measure that was passed in 2018. It's a 1/8 cent sales tax. It benefits all of the cities in Sonoma County, as well as the regional park system, passed with a 72.6% vote from Sonoma County voters. That did go into effect in April of 2019 and is currently scheduled to sunset in 2028. So we're very fortunate that Sonoma County voters gave us this opportunity to bring so many great, wonderful community events to Roanoke Park. Since we're talking about summer program, we wanted to bring an update to the council and to the community about some changes that will be happening this summer due to our budget reductions. The first is that we will be no longer offering childcare at the Calanan Sports and Fitness Center beginning July 1st. This did come with a pretty hefty expense for a very low usage. We probably had maybe two or three kids per week using the childcare facility. Magnolia Pool will also not open this season, which was originally scheduled to be, begin on June 16th. The only thing impacted at Magnolia Pool was our recreation swim. Last year, we had a total of 78 people utilize our recreation swim at Magnolia Pool for all of June, July and August. We do have recreation swim at both of our other two pools. We will move lap swim from Magnolia Pool to Honeybee Pool in the evenings. So we won't have the noon lap swim that we normally have during the regular school year, but we will have lap swim in the evening times at Honeybee Pool. And then one exciting change, and this is not only new for the summer, but it is new since I have been in Roanoke Park and I started here in 2016. This year, the Roanoke Park Foundation will be donating funds to support under-stirved youth in Roanoke Park to be able to participate in recreational opportunities. We are still finalizing the last bits of detailed information, but funds should be available beginning July 1st for family members that qualify. And as I mentioned, we'll be sending out details about how much per family, how to apply, what, what you need to qualify, et cetera. But we're very excited about the opportunity to provide some enrichment opportunity to some members of our community that have not otherwise had the opportunity. And on that, again, once, we've talked about this several times, we are working on our financial sustainability. So all the things you've seen today and all of the rest of the stuff that we do in the Community Services Department, you'll be getting a very detailed report, hopefully at the end of this fiscal year, i.e. the end of June, about all of that stuff. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'll turn to my colleagues. Councilmember Adams?
Looks like it's going to be a great summer. Thank you.
Councilmember Edward, Edward, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. That was exciting. Well, thank you so much once again. I mean, in the midst of what is going on, you bring a little bit of cheer in our faces and the kids will actually enjoy, including everybody, and create more memories. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
These look great. I know there was a buzz already happening in the community, especially about Juneteenth, and hearing folks from outside of Roanoke Park really enjoying all of our events that are put on, especially 4th of July and how family-friendly, like all ages, that it is. So hopefully our community, we can continue taking care of one another and support this moving forward because it does, it does benefit the whole and it's accessible. So thank you for all the work.
Yeah. Vice Mayor?
Thank you Cindy. My one question was actually about the subsidy program. Can you just tell a little bit more, maybe give a couple of examples of who might be applying? Is this, this is not individuals, this is organizations?
No, this is for individuals.
Individuals, okay.
Yes. So this would be families who would qualify under a certain set of criteria and then we'd be able to provide funding through them. And essentially how it would work is that we would, we would waive the fees that we would normally collect at registration and then the foundation funds would then reimburse the Community Services Department for what the family would have paid.
Thank you so much for explaining it.
You're welcome.
That's helpful. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And yes, thank you for the presentation and thank you for all the wonderful events. And, you know, we understand that the pool's going to be closed, we've got to do cutbacks. We're just feeling this all over the city. And so we really appreciate, in spite of that, that you're coming up with a great aggressive program for the summer and we look forward to it. Thank you Cindy.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll now go into public comment. Please, when I call your name, come forward, tell us who you are and you'll have three minutes and the clerk will set the time. First, Miriam Pengel. Please, welcome, Miriam.
Hi, everybody. I have become old hat at doing this. I am the president of the Roanoke Park Pickleball Club and I appreciate you all listening to me tonight. For once again to talk about the pickleball saga, appreciating everything that has been said prior, I just want to bring you back a couple of years. Two years ago, we were told by the city manager that we were going to get new, new courts. We were promised those courts in a couple of meetings. I understand financial constraints. We've got the bids, engineering, drawing, all that happened. They came back too high. We came to you guys again and asked for money. You guys approved that again. So now we're even higher, they're at $2.8 million that we were going to use for tennis and for pickleball. That being said, what happened? What actually happened? We had $2.8 million set aside. My understanding is that it came from, in our meeting just this last week with the city manager, it came, that I think came from the casino money. They give us money. Now, it seems like, you know, we're, we're giving the casino money back to the casino to build roads so they can come in on buses and go and visit the casino and, and go to their venues and get off the bus, get to go to the venues, spend all day, eat in their restaurants, get back on the bus and leave. But what I'm telling you is when you build it, they will come. And our courts are falling apart. We put some, we filled some holes, they did some cracks just the other day. But you know what? If you drive by there on any day or any evening, you pretty much are going to see people playing. They're young, they're old, they're in between. They're all over the place. You probably drove by on a Saturday yourself and looked at them. It's, and got a little jealous, who are all those people and what are they all doing, laughing and playing? We built a village, it's a community that we all built. My community is right here. Everybody is right here. And I'm very proud to represent them. But what makes me kind of sad is that we're the, I feel like sunrise is like the Golden Gate Park of Roanoke Park. It's a beautiful park, but we need some help. And when we had a meeting just this last week, what ended up happening is we were told you don't have the money. And then we're, we came up with a Plan B. Can you give us a little money? Can't give you a little money. Plan C, can we get these stripes? Can you guys do that? Well, I'm not confident with you guys doing that. I didn't say that. That was said to me by one of the heads. The bottom line is, we left there with two options, take it or leave it. Do it yourself or not. But it's not ever, it's not happening. What I'm asking for you guys is this, is there anything in the budget to give any of these courts? Is it, can you look at that budget? I implore you to, when you're given the budget on June 10th, maybe just take a look together and have a vote. Three heads are better than two. Three heads are better than one. It's, can you take a look at that budget and give us a break and let us know? If it's no, it's no, I completely understand and I'm getting beeped, I'm getting timed out. I do understand that, but it's not like me to move on.
Go ahead and finish your sentence, it's okay.
What I wanted to say is, you know, money for us to come up with, we are a non dues-paying club. We're, we're a fun club. We don't, we don't take dues, we don't have that kind of money, but we're willing to fundraise, come up.
Top. And, and the top uses their brain to say what they want, you get a tiny bit, uses their brain to say what they want, you get a tiny bit back. I'd like to suggest locally, because you guys are so fantastic, that you consider one little thing that does not cost too much money, and that's to consider starting some bottom-up government here. Bottom-up government is getting suggestions from below you and many of them are really smart. They don't cost money. So I have experience with it, I don't want to talk a lot about it, but bottom-up government means the guys that are on top, you know, get to listen to positive things from you. Anyway, I really appreciate you and I think what is to be gained from the bottom up is lots of smart suggestions from your residents. And I think right now, there's not much room for it. We're maybe at 1%, but I believe for very little money, Roanoke Park could gradually get up to a goal of 60% bottom-up from your citizens. It's a whole new thing. I've seen it happen many years ago and I don't want to say how long because I'm really not as old as you think. I actually am.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you to everyone else who came out to, to, to either, either make public comment or support those who did. We appreciate you and, and we, and we thank you. Speaker Card?
No, sir. I'm sorry about that. Brownack. Come on.
All right.
Very difficult educating a mayor on the law. I thought we straightened this out 20 years ago. How soon we forget. The mayor and the council should know that speaker cards are not required by law. You should be able to be smart enough and courteous enough to recognize anybody in the room who has their hand up for public comment. It's very embarrassing, Mayor. And where are the Zoom attendants on this meeting tonight? Where are the shut-ins and the handicapped people at home that are able to access their local government? Where are they tonight? All the technology in Roanoke Park, all the king's horses and all the king's men, where are Zoom attendees? Anybody? Bueller? How embarrassing. Just embarrassing. Mayor, what kind of leadership is this? You got shut-ins at home, you have family with kids at home, elderly, elderly folks at home, people are taken care of, they cannot access their government on Zoom? Can you guys hold a little workshop on this? Every other city in the, in the county government has you outclassed with technology. Should be ashamed of yourself.
Could you please state your name?
I guess it's on. Anyway, as the last speaker said, the Brown Act says that you do not have to identify yourself to attend a meeting. To speak at a meeting, you're supposed to give a name. You want a name? I'll give you Edmund Fitzgerald. As far as the code that Mr. Berich stated, it's Government Code 54954.3A. Every agenda for regular meetings shall provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the legislative body on any item of interest to the public. If you listed on your agenda, you need to ask for public comment. Now, if you had asked for public comment during your presentations over here by Supervisor Linda Hopkins, I would have gotten up and said something like, you know, it's time that cities quit holding out their hands expecting supervisors from the county to bail you out here. The county is very large. They have projects that would probably benefit their constituents throughout the county. I don't have a problem with the county working with cities, but frankly, I don't think that's appropriate. And as far as speaking to any item on the agenda, whether it's land acknowledgement, whether it's the Pledge of Allegiance, or if it's like item number nine, if I want to speak to something that the mayor, Mr. Judice, is saying, I should have the right to do that. And that's all I have. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Jennifer Rhodes, please. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Rhodes. I just wanted to ask, since I have been late due to transportation issues, has anything been amended in the budget for the Development Services and the 17 folks that may be going homeless again after being housed? Has anything changed with that or is that still in the cut?
This is not an opportunity for the council to respond to questions?
Okay, well, I'll...
If you have a statement, you're welcome to make it.
I just didn't want to be, I just didn't want to go on if, if it was not necessary. But, so my name is Jennifer Rhodes. I have been homeless recently for two and a half years. Last October, I was finally housed and due to the random Doge cuts, this October, I will no longer have a home. When I saw that, I believe it's the Development Services budget would be cutting funds that will keep 17 members of our community housed, I realized this is something, if some, if I could have stood up for myself, I would have. But, so I just wanted to kind of check in on that. I have an accounting background for about 15 years in food and beverage manufacturing here in Sonoma County for multi-million dollar companies. And in accounting, you become very aware that anything can be found in the budget. Of course, capital expenditure projects notwithstanding, but if made a priority, this can be found in the budget, but only if it's made a priority, which I, I ask you to do. I think that's in keeping with the proclamation about May being the Affordable Housing Month in the city of Roanoke Park. There are many great points in that proclamation, which I think directly relate to these 17 folks losing their home. I'm going to say the quiet part out loud, if anything, if helping these housed folks stay off the streets isn't, if you're not called to help in, in adding those funds back to the budget, perhaps it will help the, I guess, what I would assume, the majority to not consider us human trash. And if, if, if the streets need to be cleaned, so be it. If that's it, help in any way, please.
So Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
If I can ask our housing manager and perhaps our Director of Development Services to meet with Jennifer and explain what we're doing right now with, in particular, for those contracts. And I would suggest, Jennifer, that you, we staff are, if you have any questions regarding any...
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. We will move on to the consent calendar. Do any of my council members have a conflict or need to make a comment on anything?
I'd like to pull item 7E, and other than that, make a motion to move this consent calendar forward.
Okay. Does that have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So let's take our vote on everything except 7E, and then we'll go back with Councilmember Adams. So do a vote of affirmation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's an ordinance on the consent calendar, so we'll have to do roll call.
Roll call, okay. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Elward?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sanborn?
Yes.
Mayor Giudice?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that carries. Five zero, no opposition, please.
Thank you. Do you mind if I, sorry, do you mind if I ask Director Bagley up? I have a question about the, accepting the city's park and rec master plan.
Sure. Yes, please.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Welcome back, Cindy.
So I, I did a kind of a review of the master plan, especially in light of things that are going on right now. And I noticed that tennis court and pickleball maintenance and upgrades are not listed in the master plan. Is there a reason why they were left out?
Yeah, I believe that because the Magnolia, well, the Sunrise and Magnolia specific ones are not addressed in the deferred maintenance and addressing deficiencies, because at the time that the master plan was done, and the evaluations of all those spaces were completed, there was funding to do projects at both of those spaces. So the funding, this conversation happened post the final draft of the master plan, going to the commission and to the city council.
Thank you. I would like to pull this and have that added into the master plan, and then have it brought back for us to approve.
What's, what's the protocol for this?
So we would, we would have to work with the consultant to be able to amend the plan? So at this point, you don't need to take action? If the, if the concurrence of the council is to add that project, we can make that revision. So that, that would be the recommendation.
Okay. But, but that needs to be a motion, and then I get a second, and we do another?
Or it can just be a consensus, but simply taking no action, it would be, you know, brought back at the later day.
Organically.
But I would suggest that you have some discussion on what you would like to see, and if there is a consensus on the council, to have that added to the master plan.
Okay. So I will go to Councilmember Elward.
I have a question for clarification. How that will impact the, the master plan that we're trying to move forward? Is it going to delay it? Or what would be the consequences if we?
So yes, it would be a delay, because obviously today you were going to be approving the plan. So it would be a delay, because we would have to go back and revise and include that information in the plan.
Do you know how long that would take?
It would depend. The consultants would go back and do an evaluation, like they did with all the other spaces, to determine where they would put that in the near, long, and far-term recommendations, and do a cost analysis for it. So I can't quote exactly how long it would take, but they would have to engage in that process.
In addition to perhaps also incurring additional costs for them to come out and do that, they will have to do an assessment and come out and do an assessment of the court. So there will be an additional cost incurred for the consultant.
So, because right now, I'm, I'm just trying to figure it out, because we want to make sure that if we have some money, I would rather have that money to be used with the work that you're doing, to fund a solution for the pickleball and the project that you guys have been trying to figure it out. So I don't want that money to be taken away from that and paid someone instead of us using it and actually helping. That's just where my conflict is.
If I may suggest, as was stated before, the project was being recommended without it being included in the parks and master plan. If there is concern as to whether or not this project is going to be done, obviously as funding permits, the project does not have to be included in the parks and master. Ideally, obviously, you saw the evaluation of all of our parks. So if the concern is that by not being in the parks and master plan, the project is not going to be done, I don't believe including the project in the, in the master plan is going to discourage staff from making that project happen. And so I would caution that, you know, that there is going to be delays, and there's going to be additional costs for the consultant to go back out and do that assessment.
Did you have anything to add to that?
No, I agree with the city manager.
Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez, please. Oh, don't you have more?
Well, I, no, I, I think it needs to be in the plan. If it just is added on as an addendum, you know, take the, the work that's already been done and added in. To me, it's, it's bad enough that we're in the place we're in with these tennis courts and pickleball courts since 2021, and then bringing in the pickleball courts, not even having it as part of our master plan. To me, in, in a couple of years, some of us could be different people sitting at these seats. I think we put it in the plan. I don't know, my question is, or she's still there? What is going to be held up? What is not going to be done in that plan, let's say in 60 days, if we send this out and have it come back with this added to it? Is there something that you're waiting to do next week that can't be done if we don't approve it tonight?
No.
Thank you.
Councilmember, please.
I was just going to add to the point of Councilmember Adams in terms of, the way things are, things are changing very fast. And if we don't have it as, you know, maybe it's not as much of a hard deadline, because I think most government, most municipalities have the rug pulled out from under them in the last five, six months financially. But having it just in the document and part of it, and maybe, I'd even say to go so far as, let's look at what these footsall courts in District One are going to look like in the future, as well, of just how are we making sure that we're kind of, I guess, memorializing these areas in the case that any of these seats switch, flip, change, whatever it may be, or staffing changes, that there's a document that can be referred to? And, and just make sure that it, the projects are moving through as much as possible.
Okay. Go ahead, and then I would need to go to the Vice Mayor. Sure.
Vice Mayor, you can go. No.
Okay.
So I have, I have a question for the city manager. So based on what has been going on, because our constituent have come here already to ask for those projects to be taken into consideration, and they've been really gracious enough to offer some other ways. But as of today, have you guys have been considering other ways of figuring out things for this project? Because I'm going to base my vote based on that response. Because if you do, then for me, I'm, I'm going to have a hard time to take away funding that I would like to go to those projects right now to put it to a contractor to revise what is going on.
So we did, as Ms. Penkel pointed out, we did have a meeting with them last week, and we did talk about different alternatives, just like we do, and we explained this to them, just like we do with any other league. In fact, what was it in your meeting? In April, you approved a agreement with one of our local leagues, where they are partnering with the city to try to do some improvements to our fields. And so that's obviously the best partnership that we can have, given the limited resources that we have. And perhaps what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask our Director of Public Works, Vanessa Garrett, to come up, as her staff has been working very diligently, not only to address the issues with the pickleball courts, but also the tennis courts. We are meeting in the next two weeks with the members of the, of the tennis group, and our staff has been doing, you know, a lot of work to try to improve those courts, obviously, I mean, to the extent that we can. And so I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Garrett, so she can point out and, and share what has been done and what is being done.
Please.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, city manager and mayor and council members, Vanessa Garrett. I'm the Public Works Director. So we, we had this large project, and it was going to not only address deferred maintenance that we've seen at the tennis courts, but also do sort of an overhaul for Sunrise, Sunrise Courts. Just because our, our soil is really bad here for, you know, roads and, and a lot of our infrastructure. And so in order to fix it without having cracks in the future, you really have to dig up most of that soil and replace it with something a little bit better. So, you know, because we don't have funding for that project, what we can do, and what we did over at Sunrise was this crack repair, which we did a year ago also. And the cracks, you know, they came back after a year, but we did go out there again last week and do this crack repair to at least get these, you know, over a quarter of an inch cracks sealed and then repainted. It's, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out if we can somehow just paint over the whole court and re-stripe it too, because if you do go out there, it's nothing like, you know, contractor quality repainting, restriping. It's, it's matching the best it can, but it, it doesn't look, you know, similar to really worn green paint, for example. And then we're meeting with the, the tennis court crews as well, just to see, walking with them, hear about their concerns, which we heard a couple of weeks ago at a council meeting. It was the slipping and kind of the sandy paint, and also some cracking. So we plan on doing something similar there, and that's what we can do with our in-house staff. But that's, you know, the extent of what we can do sort of in-house right now.
Thank you.
So the reason, I just wanted to clarify, because I know that some of our constituent right now, I just want to make sure that I understand what we have been going through, but I also want to make sure that they still have trust in us and what we are doing, because if we told them that we had money, then we don't, then we don't. So what is something that will reassure them to really trust us and what we are doing? That's just my question, or I'm going.
Okay. And who's that going to be directed to? Probably the city manager, I would assume.
Yes, sir. So in terms of the, the question about whether there is money, there was money, and there has been money to do this project. The first time, it came over bid. So the money, as was reflected and discussed in the budget workshops, is the money's being used to take care of the shortfall that we have, to address, obviously, the $5 million shortfall, to assist us to get a balanced budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So the money's there. It's just being repurposed to help us address the city operations. As Ms. Garrett pointed out, we are doing the best we can with the resources that we have right now. We know the importance of the project. As it relates to this particular item, you don't have to take action. We can put it on hold and have the consultant give us a quote on how much it would cost to add these projects, or if there's other projects that you are considering for our parks, this is the time to be able to tell us as staff, so that we can make that modification and not be going back and forth in terms of adding projects. So, you know, it is important that we get, you know, direction on what it is or other areas within the city that you want us to address in terms of our parks' needs. That would be extremely helpful. Thank you.
And Susan, your, your mic is on. Did you have a comment?
Yes. I just, I wanted to just clarify. Were you saying that the city is talking about painting over the pickleball courts? Because I know, I'm like, there's two courts over there. One has got, they're, they're pickleball courts, striped as pickleball courts. The other ones are striped as tennis courts, but they have some pickleball court lines. So are you talking about painting over that, having the city do that, painting it, and then striping the tennis, I mean, striping pickleball on that one?
Uh, no. So I was referring to just the, the paint that we put over the crack sealant.
Oh, okay.
So we did do some crack sealing, and then we did some painting over those cracks specifically, which I was just saying, it, it, you know, doesn't look nearly as nice as a fresh coat of paint over the entire court.
And are you hesitant to bring out the paint and paint over? I mean, you paint stop signs, you paint stripes in the road all the time. Is, is the city not paint over tennis courts or pickleball courts?
The question is resource-wise. You know, that's why we, we did have about nine months for this contractor to do all of their work, and, and the painting part is.
Part of that, significant.
A chunk of time, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we need to give direction to staff, is asking for direction. So do we want to pull this and add it to the master plan? Or do we want to list it as an addendum? Or do we want to take it on faith that the staff is going to?
I have all the faith in the world that our staff will take care of this, but I like it in writing. You can just take the bid and clip it to the back of it and say, this is a high priority for us. Save the money for the contractor adding it, and just put it in there.
All right. So you want to do it as an amendment?
Sure. Absolutely, an amendment. But I don't want to approve this until it's been a part of it, to give these people an understanding that this is still a big priority for us.
All right. I got you. And Councilmember Elward, what would you like to do? Are you, are you going to say something?
Do you want me to? So.
So what I would recommend is pull the item, and if we need to revise it, then we will bring him back.
We just need to give the direction, that's all.
Right.
Looking at city manager, and she's looking at us. We need to tell her what we want.
Well, I was trying to get, I was trying to get comments from all the council members to see if they did want to do that, or if they wanted to just take it on faith. So do you?
I need, I need to have at least the majority of the council agree to that.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do.
If, if that is the direction, then we need, we will place it on hold and make the revised plan. So I need to have the council direction in order for us to proceed.
Okay. So I'll, I'll be comfortable.
I'm sorry, but the other option is for council to give direction to the manager to bring this back with additional analysis, because there have been a lot of questions raised about what the real impact is, the master plan. You know, I, I'm not sure that that assessment has been made by staff yet. Certainly hasn't been made by me. So I would like the opportunity to analyze that, bring it back to the council, to analyze the implications of adding it at this time, one way or another.
When you say analyze, I, I'm not clear on what you're meaning.
Well, we will bring it back, but there, there should be additional analysis done to indicate what are the impacts of adding it at this point. I mean, that, that, that discussion has never been had by, with me, or staff, or with the city manager. I would like that opportunity, because they're, rather than just making that amendment tonight.
Oh, I don't think we should make the amendment tonight.
Right. So it will be brought back, and it will be brought back with additional analysis, because at least.
And then to, to further that comment is, at this time, because we did follow a public comment period, we don't know if, with the revision, we need to do another public comment period, or bring it back to the Parks and Recreation Commission, because they've already adopted the plan. So we, we need to make sure that we follow the process.
Councilmember?
Madam City Attorney, would this require a motion or just direction?
Well, direction, just direction. But, but it, but I would like to have a consensus, so.
Yes. I just want to make sure if I needed a.
Doesn't need a formal motion, but I would need to get three affirmative.
Okay. No formal motion.
Did you want to say more?
Did you want to say more? We don't need a formal motion, is what I was asking, clarifying.
Right.
Yeah, then I will feel comfortable to go with Councilmember Adams.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Elward, that we pull the item with the analysis, so that we have the appropriate information when it is brought back to us.
Okay. So there is your consensus right there, and I would agree.
I didn't hear from the Vice Mayor. Sorry.
I can support that, sure.
Okay. Okay. What? Oh.
The analysis is going to require me to go back to the consultants and ask questions, and that's going to determine how much that's going to cost, and whether or not we have to do an addendum to the agreement. So I just like a little more clarification on exactly what you'd like to potentially see in here. Is it just simply a statement that says to evaluate the need to address deferred maintenance at Magnolia and Sunrise? Or do you want what is, what you currently see in here is an evaluation of all the potential types of projects that can be due in these spaces, how much they would cost, where it would go near, short, and far term? Or is it just a statement that you want staff to look at these two amenities to determine need?
Well, I would assume the city manager will work that out with you.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to our regular items. Move on to our regular items, and I believe that the city clerk will introduce this. Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association, Support of Letters. And would you like to give that report?
Just verbal.
Okay, we'll move on to our regular items. Move on to our regular items, uh, and I believe that the city clerk will introduce this. Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Association, Support of Letters. And would you like to give that report?
Uh, just verbal. Uh, good evening, mayor and council members. On June 12th, the Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Association Board will review council members' letters of interest and make two appointments to the Association of Bay Area Governments. One for the primary seat and one for the alternate. Two letters were received for the primary seat. One from Rona Park Councilmember Adams and the other from City of Petaluma, Councilmember Quint. For the alternate seat, there was one letter received and that was from Sebastopol Mayor Zolman. So staff is requesting that council consider supporting, uh, the letters for the two different appointments. And then also authorizing the mayor to vote on late nominations or alternate recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone from the public like to comment on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, and who would like to make the motion?
I'll make motion to, I'll make motion for us to put forth, uh, Councilmember Adams as the primary and then the alternate, uh, Mayor Steven Zolman of Sebastopol.
Okay, does that have a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, carries five zero. Okay, the next item up is eight point two, and it is an item concerning Sommo Village. Uh, I am going to recuse myself and leave the room as I lease property at Sommo Village. And I'll let the vice mayor take care of this.
There you go, okay, eight B. Read, read it out, okay. Eight B, we are going to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution to approve a tentative map and conditions of approval for the Sommo Village Phase Two N A tentative map with the Sommo Village Plan Development, uh, SEQA, consistent with the Environmental Impact Report, EIR, and supplemental EIR for the Sonoma Mountain Village Plan Development. And we're going to start with a staff report from the Director of Development Services, Alicia Giudice, and Associate Planner Elliot Pickett.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm Ally Giudice. I am the Director of Development Services. I will be presenting the report, but I have Elliot here to, um, assist with any, um, answering any questions or providing additional, um, information that I may miss. So, uh, Sommo Village, um, shown here, kind of zoomed out a little bit to give, um, the audience a little perspective and anyone watching from home some perspective on where the project is. On the north side, you'll see, um, uh, on the north side, is not working. On the north side is Camino Collegio. Um, the, um, kind of midway line is, um, uh, Valley House Drive. And then the southern portion is kind of the bottom of that, beyond the green space is, um, East Railroad. So that red line outlines where Sommo Village is located. The project was adopted originally in 2021. Um, it is a form-based code with a, uh, final development plan. And, uh, a development agreement was also, uh, adopted at the time. This is intended to be a multi-phase project. The first phase, um, has started and is near completion, if not already complete. So we're looking now at the second phase, um, or the first part of the second phase, which you see here as Phase Two N A. So zooming a little bit closer, you'll see the three blocks that are associated with this subdivision as well as the parks project. Block one, block six and block 19 are where the residential development is located. And then the green open space area is, um, reserved for open space. These are 82 residential units. In block six, there are three remaining lots that will eventually be, um, further subdivided as per the development, um, plan. And, um, this proposed development also includes three parks and an abundance of open space, common areas and roadway improvements. So zooming even further in, on block one, we have eight low-density residential units, nine, uh, 19 medium-density lots. Uh, a point-two acre park, a fire station lot. You'll see in the, in the red, uh, rectangle that has already been dedicated to the city, um, but is shown here for context. And then zooming into block six, as I mentioned, there are three parcels that will be further subdivided in the future. The remaining, kind of outside of the, um, uh, around the three lots, you have 36 medium-density lots. Most of the access points are alley access points. Not me, but the alleyway. There are pedestrian pathways, um, and lot, block 19, we have 19 medium-density lots with also alley access. Bike path and access to Smart Trail will be along the southern edge. And then this kind of gives you an impression of how the circulation happens. Um, there's a lot of lines here, but generally the purple line is coming in from, there are a couple of access points from Camino Collegio into the project site and also from Valley House into the project site. Um, in orange, you'll see the various, um, options for pedestrian or bicycle activity. Um, and then, um, not as clear, but, um, there are yellow areas where the alley access points are for the, um, for the units. So, um, a variety of parks, uh, there are three public parks totaling 3.9 acres. Um, that will be offered for dedication to the city. There's also a 3.9 acre private park that will be publicly accessible. That's intended for, um, wetland preserve and observatory. And then, uh, on the far right, you see an additional point-four acre park currently under construction, I think pretty near completion. And that was part of the first phase. All of the parks that you see on here are intended to be public, um, parks. Developer will be responsible for maintaining. Um, and then everything in the park, uh, dedication and the fire, um, station lot and, um, additional funding sources will be, um, as required by the development agreement. So there are a few slides that, um, demonstrate the view impacts because views have been kind of the topic of conversation, um, associated with Sommo Village. The two points here are showing facing east, but the, you'll see a red line. See if I can get this thing to work here, I can't get it to work. The red line kind of shows where the housing, um, outline is. And then there's a yellow line above where the, um, mountains are located. So, um, there will still be, uh, visibility through the site to the, um, mountains beyond. This is another perspective. And then third, but a little closer. And then fourth. So the project has been analyzed in the staff report. The Planning Commission received a presentation. Um, the staff report and resolutions determine that the project is consistent with the general plan, the Rona Park Municipal Code and the Sommo Village Final Development Plan. It is also compliant with the development agreement and timing and, um, obligations. Um, the findings for tentative map have been made and are included in the resolution. Um, and the resolution also includes a consistency finding that the Sonoma, uh, Mountain Village EIR and supplemental EIR, and that the project is consistent with those, um, documents. And I want to, uh, so the Planning Commission did, as I mentioned, recommend, um, approval. I had a five oh vote. There was some discussion around view impacts and compatibility of the site with existing commercial uses. And there was a conversation about how that the project was in compliance and consistent. So the Planning Commission did recommend approval. Uh, before I go into recommended action, I did want to mention, um, one of the conditions of approval, item G one, and that's on page six of the report. Um, I would like to recommend, so there was some discussion with the applicant subsequent to the Planning Commission hearing. Um, and there was confusion about what that condition of approval meant to say. And this is just clarifying what we are expecting the applicant to do. So the condition of approval should read, prior to the approval of Sommo Village Phase Two N A improvement plans, the applicant will fund the installation of the flow monitors to the existing Cannon Manor Pump Station per COA O three, which is Condition of Approval O three, and will implement all upgrades identified in the May 31st, 2022 Sonoma Mountain Village Sewer Hydraulic Evaluation by GHD Incorporated. The developer shall provide an updated sewer capacity analysis, excuse me, prior to the approval of any subsequent phases. And with that, um, staff recommends adoption of the resolution approving the tentative map for the proposed project. Um, the applicant is here, um, in the audience and is able to answer any questions. Uh, I'm able to answer questions or willing to as I can, as I'm able to. Um, and Elliot will support me as, um, as items come up that I'm, that he might be more familiar with. So that concludes my report.
Hi, that's me. We're going to go ahead and conduct a public hearing now. I'm opening the public hearing and we will be taking, we have three speaker cards this evening. So far, so good, my first time. Um, and Mr. Sean Roney, would you like to make your way to the podium? And then we'll take, uh, Aaron Armstrong and David Armstrong after that.
Hello, I am known to some of you here on the city council as being opposed to all things that have gone on with the Sommo because of the fact that I was at the Planning Commission, actually, and, uh, mentioned the fact that they have not been following the rules. People who have moved into the neighborhood adjacent to this phase two were not notified of the construction prior to purchasing their homes. It was, or as late as 2019 when the last person on my street moved in. So we had no constructive notice prior to moving in that this was going to be done. Um, every time that I have come out, commented on people from Sommo not following the rules, their agents running stop signs, their people violating noise ordinance, operating outside of their allotted time for construction, it's been met with silence. I've been schlopped off by members of the council, by members of staff. I've had an email saying that they can, that Rona Park City consistently reminds Sommo about following the rules. They don't. The Planning Commission happened on the 10th, I've talked about following the rules. People from Sommo said that they do as best as they can. It's only less than 10 days later to find that they had people working on Easter. They had people working just as late as eight o'clock, just on Friday. They're putting sandwich board signs out, told them that that was illegal. They brought it back in, only to put it back out on the weekends when it can't be enforced. Had to get a phone number from somebody at the city to show them pictures the day of on the weekend because they kept bringing in the sandwich board in violation of the city, uh, laws. We have video of members of their construction urinating in view of our street, from our homes. I mean, it's, it's an, it's like streaming into the void, where the, and the void just answers with crickets. And it's just exhausting to keep doing this and to not feel heard. And being told that, oh, we'll file, we'll follow up with it, or, oh, we'll hold them accountable. And yet, nothing gets done. They put up signs, but the phone number on the sign doesn't connect to anything on it. It says, call Sommo Build or Sommo Construction. You call that number, there's nothing listed about that. It's maddening, and it just feels like the fact that this is going in is going to bury the constituents that you have with new ones, so it doesn't really matter what we say. That's the feeling, because I've been fighting this fight for years. I get quiet every once in a while because I get tired. I get so tired of just complaining and having no progress. I see that I'm about to run out of time, but it's, and there's also other things, like all these new people coming into W section and also this section. I have seen one police car in nine months. I work from home, I walk my dogs every day. I don't see any increase in services. What I do see is an increase in traffic, trash, problems in parking with people parking on Camino Collegio, delivery trucks on there, even though they're not supposed to. I'm just tired.
Thank you, Mr. Roney. Next up, Aaron Armstrong.
My name is Aaron Armstrong and I live at 840 Lance Wood Court. And I have lived here for 24 years. We bought our house in 2001. We moved to Rona Park in 1995. It took me six years to find a house. I wanted a four-bedroom, two-bath, a big lot, privacy. I was living in G section with six houses looking in on my yard. Took me six years to find it. I finally found it. I have the best view in Rona Park, in my opinion. I gaze upon Sonoma Mountain, I feel a kindred spirit with Sonoma Mountain. I have set up my entire backyard. I have couches out there, I have my dining out there. We built a house for my 92-year-old mother-in-law to be a part of our family. And her house faces north, our house faces east. We designed her house looking at the view. When this whole thing started in 2015, we were at every meeting. We didn't know it was going to be as big as it is. We went to every meeting and our, can, we face the vernal pool, I don't know if that's a correct term, and the soccer field. And we've been told all along that that will be kept. I'm hoping that it is. However, we weren't told at that time that they're going to build five-story views, which are going to literally obliterate my view, which is really going to make me sad. But it's also going to diminish the value of my home because in my opinion, I have the Golden Gate View, Golden Gate Bridge as my view. It's a million-dollar view, and now it's going to be blocked. So, you know, I, I don't want to look at houses. And I certainly don't want to look at five-story buildings on the inside. I've asked Mr. Bradley Baker, excuse me, to put up story poles so I can get a vision of how big these houses are going to be. I've not heard anything back from him other than he said he was going to. To be quite honest, I don't trust big developers. I mean, I hope that they save that vernal wet pools and I hope that they keep that football field. And I hope that I don't have five-story buildings. But my, my ask today, I would ask that they build only single-level homes on the sides closest to the Smart Train to keep my view shed sacred and safe. So I'm just asking for your help. I was unable to make it to the Planning Commission to view my opinions. But I, I'm, I don't trust a developer as far as I can throw them. And I'm very sad that this is going into my backyard, to be quite honest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. And David, would you like to join us up at the podium? You got three minutes, sir.
Hello, my name is Dr. David Armstrong. I'm a resident of Rona Park for 24 years. I'm also a business owner. I have a chiropractic practice that I've had for over the past 20 years in this town. Essentially what we're asking, and I'm familiar with the project. I was on the Planning Commission in 2015 when this was approved, when, uh, George Giudice was on the Planning Commission with me. And what we're asking for is a preservation of our sightline. The sightline basically is impacted by the proposed five-story interior, uh, block six further subdivision that's referenced in the, um, subdivision plan. So what I'm asking for is to curb any appropriate approval of the five-story, until we get the, what we had discussed with the applicant, which were the story poles, which would give us a absolute view a, as to how it will impact our view. So those five-story elements, interior have not been developed or sold. It's the single-family housing that's going on now. But, um, that in, view impact, number two, is taken essentially from our backyard, which obliterates at least 50% of the, um, of our view of the mountain. So again, um, if it's possible to put conditions on the approval of the interior potential five-story development, which seems to be the greatest impact on our visual at, as it relates to Sonoma Mountain Village, because we are on the Smart Train track. We just had to remove a series of three different diseased trees, so now we are fully exposed. So, um, the preservation of our, um, sightline and some of the other neighbors that are here. And to, to be, um, factual, it's been a good communication and relationship with Brad Baker and Sonoma Mountain Village, um, in, in this manifestation. And I think overall, it's a good plan, but we need to consider the existing residents that have, um, made significant investments of, you know, I just spent another 300 grand to put another house on my property for my 92-year-old mother. And so she won't be with us forever, but we'll be at that site, we're never leaving. And so, um, I'd like you to strongly consider at least limiting the visual impact of the proposed five-story, um, which was block six of the subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. And then I wanted to give an opportunity. And then I wanted to give an opportunity to the applicant to speak, if you'd like, on this project.
Hi. Good evening. Eric Reed, CFO with SOMO Village. Brad Baker is traveling, so I'm going to fill in for him this evening. I guess I did want to point out that the, we do have zoning to build, I think, up to five-story apartments in the area closest to the commercial buildings. That's not part of this tentative map, though. And if we, if we, if we do build those apartments, that actually is going to be the last phase of development. And right now, that kind of phase, those apartments that are next to the commercial buildings are all on the existing commercial parking. And it's, we need that parking. I don't, I don't think we're going to be able to give it up. So I sincerely think that those apartments are pretty unlikely. We are putting in single-story, kind of sprinkling them in on the line of homes that are closest to the tracks, closest to your guys' homes, with the intent to preserve, preserve your views. So I think, I think it, I think it should be okay. That's all I got.
That's it. We're going to go ahead and close the public comment. And what's next?
Vice Counsel.
Oh, yeah, your comment. Thank you. Oh, you need the gavel involved? Okay. That makes it official? Okay. So Councilmember Adams, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
So I do have some questions. And first of all, I appreciate your report and I am very much appreciative of the comments. I first heard about this project in 2003, 2004, 2005 on the planning commission. So none of this is new. I also have a question for the city manager, and that is to address the gentleman who made the comment about who's responsible for constructive notice. But he mentioned that he bought his house and is that not the person selling him the house that's responsible for that? Not the builder of this new project in the next phase over? Or I guess the city manager can answer.
Is this, can I, is this regarding the, I wasn't clear on, from the commenter, whether they were within the development? And if it's within the development, typically it's the developer providing the notification.
So I think, I think he bought a house in, people are in the L neighborhood, buying houses in the L neighborhood. And, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know where he went. I've never met this gentleman before, seen him. But I think what he's saying is that people who are buying houses there now are not being told that there's this major construction project. Who's responsible for telling people who are buying houses in the L neighborhood that there's a massive project going on at Sonoma Mountain Village?
I think that, I'm not sure that I'm able to provide, like, who's the, who has the obligation of providing notification? Is that a real estate question?
Well, there's no obligation on the city's part to provide any notice for future development.
Thank you. And I don't know that it's the responsibility of the developer to go tell people in the other neighborhoods, right?
I'm not aware, but I've never researched that.
So the question about the sightline and the five-story building, that, according to my reading, is not part of this project, correct?
That's correct. The five-story building is located further, much further east of this development or this tentative map. However, the heights, setbacks, all of that thing, those are included in the final development plan. So when the applicant comes in with their actual design, this is a tentative map application. When they come in with their design, they will be required to comply with whatever has been approved for the final development plan. So it'll be, they'll need to demonstrate compliance. And they are allowed to build more than single stories. The developer has indicated that he's willing to look at mixing in some single-story development, but they do have the ability to go further.
So in your proposal, if you could, or your presentation, if you could go back, you had a nice little drawing of, right there, right there you go.
There's, there's.
Yes. That one. There you go. Is that, that's from the developer showing that there's varied heights along the way there?
This is the developer showing the, what the potential height, what the potential view loss would be if they develop per standards.
Okay. For the standards, they've already been approved to build.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's, let me see if I have any other questions. There was a question about the fields, the soccer field that is just bare land. That's not part of this either.
It is not, and I'm going to look to Elliot as I think he is very clear on when the soccer fields are mixed into this development.
So I wasn't fully clear on the question. I know the space that used to have the soccer fields is what we're now seeing as the ball field and in the wetland preserves area. That's where the current soccer field is. I know the developer also gave financing for some offside soccer field improvements.
Yes.
Assuming that today we're talking about the area that is currently occupied by the soccer fields, those areas are shown in the map for dedication. The timing of improvement of those areas may not hit for another couple hundred homes, but the timing of that is all within the development agreement and they're complying with their obligation to dedicate land there. What we see there on this figure is where they're dedicating it. The location of where the homes are and where the parks are will be as it's shown in this map. That's not up for debate if we move forward with this.
That's what I thought. Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that, again, this has been discussed and going on since 2003, 2004. It's one thing to talk about it, it's another thing to see it going up in the next field over. So I have some sympathy for that, but it's not our purview to go in and do in advance to tell the developer what he can't do if it's not before us today. So, thank you very much. That's the end of my questions.
Councilmember Elwin.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I got, I got a little bit concerned when I started to hear the public comment. However, when the applicant came and explained and what I'm hearing right now, so for our constituent that are concerned about that side of the field, if I can call it, so right now, it's not the case. Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
So right now, I'm, I think I understand what you're saying. Right now, the, excuse me. What you're seeing in the forefront is going to remain park area and then the, you'll see, you can see where the buildings are located. That would be, it's going to be substantially setback from existing development.
Okay. And from my understanding, when we had the applicant about a year or two ago, I don't remember, but when they came before we approved this application, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there were some requirement that they said that they were going to provide, like, for example, the sound wall and all this thing along, what is that street? I forget. Sonoma Mountain, all those apartment. Yes, yes. So from my understanding, they provided it. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, or is it something different that I'm hearing right now? Because I believe that they have been following what they said they were going to do. And I want to make sure that they are doing it because, to me, it seems like that. Is that, am I correct or not?
Their obligation for the sound wall along Camino Collegio has been complied with.
Okay.
The wetlands and the shape and size of the wetlands serves as the noise mitigation along this area.
Okay. Yeah, that was, that was my concern because I wanted to make sure that we're on the same page with what I'm hearing from the constituent concern. And if it's not, okay, I remember something. So there was a, the previous commenter said that the number that they put on the billboard to call for complaint doesn't work. Have you guys checked on that?
That's the first time I've heard. I can, I can check on that. I have not tried the number, but we can, we can go out there and take a look.
Okay, I'll follow up on that. So, thank you. That was, that was it for me.
I think firstly, concerning to hear that there's possible public urination happening in broad daylight and movement of city property like the sandwich boards that was mentioned. I don't know if Madam City Manager, if we can look into that and ensure. I know that, you know, listen, 30-year resident living in one of the first houses built here, the city has changed, but it's also 60-plus years old and it is changing. We don't always foresee these things and we do our best, but I also want to make sure that the residents that are, that our community is also being looked out for. That's what I believe is part of why people purchase here. We're the friendly city. We have these great parks. We have these great amenities. And so I can imagine how disheartening it is to be so excited and have your new home and experience this. In terms of the phone number as well, I don't know if, I apologize, I didn't catch your name from SOMO Village. Is Eric, thank you. Is there a phone number that you might have that can be provided to folks for the publics that they're aware?
You need to ask the chair if it's okay.
Oh, is it okay if I re-ask my question to the public?
She has to reopen the public hearing. And to speed it again.
Am I allowed to do that?
Yes.
Go ahead, ask me.
Can you please open public hearing so I can ask a question?
Let's open it back up to have a few more questions answered by Eric Reed of SOMO.
I don't have it.
Okay, so you don't have it handy currently? Okay, then, okay.
Great. Thank you for following up. We're going to close the public comment again.
Okay. So, so then we'll wait for, Ali, you mentioned you'll follow up on it anyways and maybe we can post that somewhere or just have it available for community members to have access to. Because I think, I think we all know and it's, and I know Mr. Baker as well, it's, when you want community buy-in, it takes community engagement and so that we can kind of just hear each other out and move forward with that. One question I had, although it's not in this plan that it'll be five stories, I agree with one of the comments, it's, it's difficult even for me to visualize. What is the current story height that's already there at SOMO Village right now? Is that three?
Two.
For the buildings that are there? The height, yeah.
Let's have Mr. Pickett, oh, I'm going to gall you guys. Let's have Mr. Pickett answer some questions and clarify a little bit about height of existing compared to future of, I believe specifically, not what this item is about, but to the east of that, the taller of the buildings.
Would you clarify if you're?
Yeah, so, so I guess for me, like visually, I see the picture there. I'm not saying that it's been determined that there's no five-story building within this tentative plan right now, but visually, so like the, where Old Kaz is, is that considered a two-story building, a three-story buil, like just a visual of that? What would that be? Because sometimes, I know for myself, listen, three stories to me is like, I might as well be in New York City. But then, then our incredible staff will be like, no, actually, that's three stories. And I'm like, oh, okay, it's not, it's not that tall. I'm also 5'2", so everything's tall.
I can start just by kind of giving you an impression of what a three-story building or four-story building might be. Typically, your, like a single-story building is about 15 feet when you think about the roof height and everything. And then each level, you're assuming about nine to 10 feet. So by the time you get, you know, every time you think about like a five-story building, you're assuming a five, every story is 10 feet, so you're about 50 feet or so. So answering that question, I believe you, were you also asking about what the existing height of the condo units? Like what those?
Yeah, of the buildings that are there now. So like in comparison to this buil, like this building would be, if you had to use it as an example to somebody, this is about the height of a?
I'd be really guessing.
Two-story, three-story?
I would say about two and a half stories.
Okay.
Three stories.
Or like our public safety department, three or four?
I'm trying to visualize. Those are about three or four stories.
Okay. So we'll say like public safety is four stories height-wise. And I'm just trying to say, for me visually, I appreciate the feet. I don't, my brain doesn't visualize it that way. But I guess I'm just saying, if we added 10 more feet to that, so another layer to, let's say, public safety, that would be the limit, should that come to us at any point.
I think what might be helpful is, because you have, five stories is really hard, like it's, it's a hard measurement. I think there might be an actual number that I'm curious if Elliot has that readily available in his mind.
I would also just add that, you know, to, to try to visualize what five stories, five stories looks different depending upon how the design is. And I know that there are a lot of different designs for five-story buildings. They're called step backs. They're like, so that for view purposes. So to try to visualize it now, just based on a, you know, I don't think that's doing the project or the residents a service because that really isn't reflecting what it will look like. We really need to see what the design is because, and that is, that's a, you know, five stories is, I think, we don't have any buildings in Roner Park that are five stories. So that will be a new concept, but I can pretty much guarantee that in that analysis, staff is going to be looking at ways to limit the view impact. And I, I've seen it in other jurisdictions. One way they do that is they have different designs, step backs, other ways to eliminate the massing. It's the massing that is the concern.
Okay. I'll move on to my next question. But I believe, I was trying to go back to the planning commission. There is talk about consistency of signage, for street signage. Was that part of, when you talked about what was discussed? Was that included in that portion?
We were having some separate conversations about signage overall that mostly relates to what's affecting the commercial area and not part of what we see here. All of the public streets would have our typical public signage.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all my questions for now.
Anyone else? Want to go for another round? No? Okay.
Comments here?
Oh, yeah. I'll take your comments. Sure.
I'm ready to make a motion. Can I make a motion then have comments?
Yeah, can I add something?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I forgot myself. I did want to just have you give a quick recap because I know that since there have been some complaints about the construction compliance with our building requirements, you know, time of operation and such, you have made some efforts to enforce in Sonoma Mountain Village. Can you just tell us what that?
Sure.
What it was in response to and what that response looked like and how it ended?
Yeah. So there's been kind of, you know, various types of responses where there, where we have heard that there's early construction, what we initially initiated, you know, kind of spot checking here and there to see if some, if we had contractors out there before the start time. We weren't seeing anything, but because we were getting consistent complaints, at some point in time, we'd said, okay, we're going to have somebody there every day for the next couple of weeks. We did observe that there were some contractors showing up early and we informed the applicant. The challenges that there, we have the applicant that's developing part of the site. We have merchant builders that are developing other portions of the site. So we're, we're needing to kind of educate the different contractors. And in addition to that, we have different trades coming in and going. So we're needing to educate each of those. We've installed, we've required the applicant to install signage that references the, you know, time of operation, when they can start construction, when they have to leave, noise parameters, and require that they provide a phone number and a contact information. We've reached out regularly to the developers, the applicants, explain the concerns. They've been responsive. They've been responsive in, in, you know, receiving my calls. We just continue to monitor. We are, we are aware, there are concerned neighbors, and we, we try to be out there as much as we can to address concerns.
Thanks, I just thought it was helpful to share that. Okay, let's take some comments.
Can I, my events, can I ask a question really quick? It's based, it's based on the, the noise. So my question is, isn't it like, because we have an event center there, so the working noise and sometimes the event center noise, do you think that that could be also an issue where people really don't make a difference or, you know? Because sometimes I, I remember receiving an email from someone complaining about noise, but it was an event that was going on there and they can't be there until 10 o'clock. So I'm just wondering if it's, that's something also to, to consider for the constituent as well?
Yes, so there, the, there are two types of complaints that we've heard. One of them is related to early construction start times. We also have heard concerns about the, the fact that there's noise coming from the event center. Both we are responsive to and we've been trying to figure out ways to address those and, but it is, you know, you're right, there is a commercial component to this project and there's an expectation that this site, the commercial site, will be a place where we expect activity. And we will have to continue to monitor how that commercial space operates. But they're both, they're construction-related and, and the events.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Adams, do you want to go back to your question or your comment?
Actually, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a Resolution 2025-034 approving a tentative map to allow the subdivision of a 28.4-acre site south of Camino Collegio and east of the Smart Train right-of-way within the Somow Village Plan Development.
Vice Mayor, if I may, would that be inclusive of the revised condition of approval?
Yes, with the revised condition of approval.
So that needs to be read verbatim into the record now and so that the council, when they, when you make the motion, that you will say as read and amended by staff. So, so Ali, Ms. Judice should, should read it as, as part of her staff presentation.
So the condition of approval reads G1, prior to the approval of Somow Village Phase 2 NA improvement plans, the applicant will fund the installation of the flow monitors to the existing Cannon Manor Pump Station per COA 03 and will implement all upgrades identified in the May 31, 2022 Sonoma Mountain Village Sewer Hydraulic Evaluation by GHD Incorporated. The developer shall provide an updated sewer capacity analysis prior to the approval of any subsequent phases.
I accept that revision into my motion and look now for a second.
A second. Okay, okay, go ahead, what is your comment?
Eric, thank you for coming tonight representing Mr. Baker. I would just ask that you and Mr. Baker work with these folks here, maybe give them your telephone number. They have some concerns about construction and signs and things that people should not be doing in public. And our staff is more than happy to get involved, but I think if we could cut out the middleman and have you kind of look after that, that would be so much appreciated. I can't, you can't talk, I'm so sorry. It's all right. But thank you very much. And with that, I'm done.
Great, and do we need a roll call vote? Or may we go ahead and, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes by a 401 vote. Mayor Judice is absent.
Okay, let's call Mayor Judice back in.
Vice Mayor, can we take a, yeah?
I was, I was thinking the same thing. We're going to take a quick five-minute break. See you back here at 7:00.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and bring it back. It's, it's 7:00 o'clock and I thank you for that recess and thank you to the Vice Mayor for running that last item for me. We're now on committee liaison and other reports and we'll start off with Councilmember Rodriguez, please. Yeah, exactly.
And to other people. Chamber of Commerce, let me just pull that up really quickly. I wasn't able to attend, but Lisa, the Executive Director, sent us a lovely update. This Friday is actually their annual golf tournament and they are partnering with the Lyme Foundation for that, so it's happening at Foxtail, award-winning Foxtail Golf Course. On Tuesday, June 3, there is a ribbon cutting for Radiant Dental Aesthetics over in Rayleigh Town Center. And then on Wednesday, it's the Noon Times Networking Luncheon happening at Foxtail. The speaker will be Age Well Pace. And on Wednes-, oh, I can wait for that one. Any other events are available on their website. If you're able to squeeze in, I don't know if it's sold out yet, but if you can squeeze in for the golf tournament, it's a great one. Definitely shouldn't miss. And then I'll just go into our next, my next one. On, when was that? On the 21st, I attended the, what we call our two-by-two-by-two committee as the Chair of the Education Committee with Cotati-Roner Park Unified in partnership with the City of Cotati and Sonoma State, as well as us and the school district. We were able to talk about the kind of disaster response and how all the entities can continue to work together for our constituents, our students and faculty staff. There is going to be the Great Shakeout October 16. Currently, the school district has Thomas Page and University Elementary participating in that. It might be the TKers that are going to be doing that, so we'll have more to share then. We also got an overview of their budget as well. Roner, or Cotati-Roner Park Unified School District is one of five in the entire state of California with growing enrollment. And yet we are the You want to? Oh, okay. We are the third-largest district in the county and we are the fourth-least funded in the state. So there was some kind of brainstorming on how we can advocate a bit more and how the school district gets funding. So although they're meeting the needs as our city continues to grow and, you know, we have an average age per the census of 35 years old here, we're a growing community, they don't, they're not projecting the funds to be able to properly support the students and their needs and meeting kind of building capacity. So we, we all kind of did a good brainstorming session and how to continue advocacy moving forward. So that was it?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I'll share with you a little about the Zero Waste Sonoma Board of Directors meeting on May 15. Couple of highlights. We, as a board, approved an agreement with the Reuse Alliance to continue with repair fair education events throughout the county, all the different jurisdictions. We've had a couple of really successful ones here in Roner Park. And so those will continue into 2020, 25, 26. And what else? We got a recap of a one-and-a-half-year project that Zero Waste has been doing in partnership with compliance with Cascadia Consulting Group. So Cascadia helps by going out to different businesses and educating them about all the different regulations and rules around compliance with composting and, you know, reusable food wares and, you know, what kind of takeout containers are and aren't allowed material-wise here in the county. It's, it's a big burden for some food businesses. So they go out and they do education. And so it was a really amazing discussion. You can see a recap of it, of course, in the notes. And additionally, Cascadia did one other thing with us here. Oh, we separately, sorry, new thought. We looked at an agreement for a new software that Zero Waste Sonoma is going to use to help track all of that compliance with SB 1383 so that we can get a better understanding of, you know, what businesses are at what stage in their learning process and helping them to be able to be compliant. So having, we have a database now, but having a better database will better help us with reporting and figuring out where there are gaps in data, basically, who else needs more help. So it's been really effective so far. And hmm, those are the main highlights. We did do a recognition for resident Terry Taylor who received a green resolution for being a leader in zero-waste reduction in his community in Windsor and throughout the area, so appreciation to him. And then I also attended the Mayor's and Council Members Association of Sonoma County's Legislative Committee Meeting on May 16 in place of our mayor. And we basically just did a rundown of all of the different bills that are going in to be considered. It was a variety of things. And with that, we also had representatives from each jurisdiction. I think this is our best-attended event yet, sorry, that you missed that mayor. And that we also had representatives from Assembly Connolly's office and who else was there? Sorry, Dot, oh, no, not Dot, Assembly, oh, Cabaldin, thank you. Chris Cabaldin, it was, sorry, it was a million years ago, two weeks ago. So it was educational. The jurisdictions overall supported moving these measures forward and there were a few people that felt like they wanted to abstain just because they wanted more information, but all in all, it was a really great session.
Thank you and thank you for filling in for me. Okay, my report outs. Golden Gate Bridge was Thursday the 22nd, Friday the 23rd. One of the main topics of discussion was the seismic retrofit of the 88-year-old bridge. Two years ago, it was budgeted to cost $840 million. Unfortunately, the new cost is $1.8 billion with a B due to labor materials costs that have gone up and changes, more importantly, in the regulations as to how long employees can be exposed to lead paint. So that really has put a wrench in things. So we'll now perform the work in two phases. We've already begun the work. The towers will be started first, so the two towers, and the deck will have to wait for a couple of years in hopes that we'll have a little bit more of a friendly climate in Washington to continue the, the funding. Bridge traffic in April was about 7% over the previous April, but still well below pre-pandemic levels. We also tackled the budget. Like every other entity, we are upside down to the tune of $24 million. And we are this year going to have to backfill that with reserves. Luckily, the Bridge District has about $400 million in reserves. So that's what we're going to do and continue to tighten our belts and do what we're trying to do here and they're trying to do everywhere else. So, yeah, but there's one thing that I wanted to mention that was at the trail of them telling us that we have our, our seismic retrofit money secure. And this basically is from, from FTA, right, the federal, the federal, what does that stand for? So the Federal Transportation Administration, right? And I want to read this to you. This is what we have to do to comply with the grant. I'm sure this is being repeated in jurisdictions around the country. The recipient will cooperate with The recipient will cooperate with federal officials in the enforcement of federal law, including cooperation with and not impeding U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, and other federal offices and components of the Department of Homeland Security in the enforcement of federal immigration law." And so there you have it. Now we'll go on to, I believe, City Manager Marcela Piedra has going to, submitted a report for SIRA and for REMIF. Do you have anything to comment on that? I know the reports were submitted.
Mayor, they were provided in written format and our wonderful Human Resource Director did provide that report, so thank you. It's on file.
Fantastic. Thank you. Now we've got reports under Government Code Section 53232-3. Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Marin County, Mujer Latina Luncheon, 58. Would anyone like to report on that?
Yeah, I was invited by the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Marin. They're trying to kind of build the bridge with neighbors, which is great. It was great to see folks from the United Way of Wine Country there, as well as Redwood Credit Union and a few others. And then I saw some old colleagues there from Marin, my time in Marin. But they had a great presentation from the College of Marin and how they are trying to get the workforce prepared and the different types of programming that they have, especially given demographics and, and continuing sustainability locally and regionally within the Bay Area. So you can find more on the College of Marin website.
Okay, would you like to continue and talk about the immigration update by Lucien? No? Okay. That's fine. So we had an immigration update by, by Lucien, where we had a professor from UCSF or was it San Francisco State?
UCSF.
UCSF, giving us an overview of immigration law and how it evolved in the United States. We had a wonderful panel of service providers who were telling their story from their perspective, which was, which was great to hear. And just really a, a call to action in general for us to be engaged and informed and to help those who are in need right now. So I would just, my hat's off to Herman Hernandez and Lucien for highlighting this very problematic and troubling, you know, troubling topic. I mean, they're just coming after our immigrant population. There's an undocumented population. There's no other way to say it. And it doesn't look like it's going to get better in, in the near future, so, yeah. Next is the Salute to Community. I'll report out on that. So honestly, I think it was a hopeful and heartwarming evening honoring local educators, first responders, and individuals and organizations who embrace the rotary idea of, you know, service of self. It was our ninth annual event, so I've been really proud to do it for the last nine years. Herman Hernandez from Lucien once again provided a moving keynote and spoke about his personal rotary story, which I thought was very moving. Among the recipients this year were Project Graduation and also our Detective Kevin Escher. So that was a really nice evening and thank you to all who attended and, yeah. Okay, and then Emily, can you report on the Laguna de Santa Rosa Taking Flight Foundation?
I mean, we go to a lot of great events, but this is one of my favorites. I went to the Taking Flight Foundation fundraiser. It was on the 15th. And they do at the Laguna de Santa Rosa, a lot of education for, especially for elementary school kids. And it was a fundraiser. I was amazed. They raised over $250,000 in about 30 minutes, which I've been to a lot of fundraisers, but it was pretty incredible. Lots of generous donors, both private donors and also some different groups, including the Greatin Tribe. And I had the opportunity to meet a lot of people who had some really great ideas. You know, as we talk about the Creek Trail that the city's going to be working on here in partnership with Ag and Open Space and with Parks and County Parks. Just some different ideas about how we can continue to improve the area next to that. So it was a great opportunity to meet some current and future partners.
Thank you. And I forgot one report out. Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Association Board of Directors Meeting on 5/22 is at the Burton Rec Center. Thank you to our City Manager for attending. Thank you to the County Administrator for attending as well. The nine jurisdictions came together and we basically just went around the room and we had everyone state their top three and we did a scoring system and we got to the end. And the three that rose to the top were Mental Health Services, Emergency Preparedness, and Shared Facilities. And now the process, for instance, Sebastopol is located, you know, in West Sonoma County and around a lot of unincorporated area. And a lot of those folks in the unincorporated area use the services of the city of Sebastopol. So a lot of these cities like Cloverdale and Sonoma and Sebastopol and Windsor definitely wanted that. That was high on their priority list to talk about that and I thought that was valid. So, yeah. So next steps are, the cities will further articulate their, their views and, and we're going to come back to you and, and do that as well. And then we're going to go through the process. And you saw Supervisor Hopkins indicate that for the mental health Measure O stuff that we'll probably be working with Supervisors Corsi and Gore. And the Mayors and Councilmembers voted that the Chair and the Vice Chair would be the negot, would be the ones who would represent the jurisdictions and that'll run with it. So this year, it's Ronard Park and Santa Rosa. Next year, it'll be Santa Rosa and Sebastopol and moving forward. So it was, it was a really big night in, in terms of us finally all coming together. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that'll really highlight these issues that affect all the cities and we can move forward in a more collaborative manner, you know, with the counties. So, so that's it. That's my report out.
Can I just make a comment about?
Sure, you can.
Something you reported? The city attorney can stop me if she needs to, but the supervisor mentioned that we're talking about Measure O funds and our Labath Landing. Those are Measure O funds. Those are not state or federal funds. Those are tax funds that should be coming back to us. Somehow, we need to make sure we're clear about that because it sounded like there was a kind of little dance off to the side and you've already collected those money. You have them in the bank. Time to give them back.
Yep. Okay. Communications. Who has things to communicate?
I have some. I'm back.
I knew that.
I didn't have any last time. First off, I want to congratulate again all the graduates from Sonoma State University. I was able to attend La Raza Grad and being able to just see the Green Music Center filled with all those students and families was incredible. Unfortunately, this year I couldn't make it to the other graduations due to other commitments. And I want to preemptively congratulate our high school and TK and kindergarten and middle school grads. They are, it's, it's hard, man. You can't have naps. Like, it's rough. Their graduation, so Rancho, the high schools graduate on June 5th and that evening, Project Grad has their grad night to keep our students safe. And since its inception, there have been zero injuries or death caused by driving under the influence or, or substance use. They are needing volunteers, so if you can volunteer your time, it is always much appreciated. So that happens the evening of graduation, so that's Thursday, June 5th. And then I'm going to boast on myself. I am receiving an Emerging Leader Award from the Bay Area Latino Elected Officials on Friday, so I will be at that summit and get to proudly represent Ronard Park as being part of the host committee. Hopefully, they'll be in town next year. And so I will be at that this week and I think that's it for now.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else with communication? I do have a couple. Or go ahead, please, Vice Mayor. I'm sorry.
I'm having a moment where I can't remember if I already told you guys about this, but we had, I mentioned to you that we were doing Sonoma State Moveout, Recology, a few volunteers and I partnered to go through the dorms, dumpsters, dumpster areas and, and really encourage moving out students to donate items that were still very usable. And I just wanted to share that it, it made a pretty big impact and we're definitely going to expand it further next year. There was so much wonderful furniture, food. You would be amazed what kind of things were discarded. And thankfully, with Recology's help, we were able to divert some of that. Edible food was donated to the Food Bank and furniture and such was picked up by flipside threat, the United Civil Policy. So a fantastic idea from one of the employees at Recology, Heather, and it was just a, a great start in the right direction to keeping things out of landfill, which then gives us more landfill space for the future. And I wanted to mention, oh, we did our Brown Act training. Nobody remembered how fun that was on May 19th. And we also are going to be doing pride flag raising on May 30th. And that is, am I correct, outside of the library?
Correct.
As usual, so that's exciting too. That is a good question. 9:00 AM.
Thank you. So I got a letter in the mail yesterday and says, "Dear Mayor Gerard Judache, on behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, I'm happy to extend my warmest congratulations to the city of Ronard Park on successfully achieving 2024 Tree City USA status and receiving a growth award. This well-deserved recognition is a testament to your community's unwavering commitment to planting, care, and the celebration of trees." So thank you very much and I'll give this to Vanessa to share with her staff. And then finally, tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM at 5,000 Presley Road in Ronard Park, Trail to Crane Creek Regional Park, we are doing the groundbreaking. It is at 9:00 AM and the community is welcome to attend and we hope that you will all come out and support us as we, as we bed ground on this, on this great project. So hopefully, we'll see you there tomorrow. Okay, any other communication?
No.
Okay, adding agenda items to a future City Council meeting agenda? No? Okay. Public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment? Okay, seeing none. This meeting is adjourned to recess, to closed session conference. Actually, we're going to do it in this chambers here to consider designated labor negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54957. We will take a 10-minute break while we, while we prepare the room. Thank you very much.